We've called this meeting regular council meeting to order until the first 2019. Are there any additions to the agenda?
Ten minutes on my take, you session's at five.
Okay, motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, any citizens comments this evening? Okay, consent agenda, approved minutes, regular council meeting, September 17th.
Not really, just getting to St. John, been here a few months.
Oh.
Thank you. We enjoy the simpler life, let's put it that way. I'm just safety concerned about the speed limit within the city. Especially residential areas where they're tight. Where the roads are tight, somewhere they're tight. Just my opinion, but I think thirty miles per hour is on some of the residential roads, or actually, the rest of the residential roads except for the ones that are marked thirty, like First Street, Fourth Street. I believe those should be twenty-five and not people screaming down the roads because of children playing. You know, something might happen, I just, I don't know. I don't know if anybody's aware of that, or... Because I got a dirt road, then a partial paved road, then a dirt road, and I can't believe that little road is thirty miles an hour. These people are just screaming down. Literally.
Is it certain individuals that you've been seeing do it? I mean, I don't feel like we've quite had an issue with that.
A whole lot of people. Oh, well, you don't live on the outskirts of the community. I don't know who's doing it, I mean, I just... It's just a lot of cars. They just... Pretty quick. I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong. Today. Just thought I'd look at that.
What is it, where?
South Street. And, actually, I live on Canokian, and that's what the house is on. So it's Canokian South, right there. It's a dirt road, very small paved road, for about seventy-five yards, hundred yards, and then it's a dirt road again. Just get a lot of traffic comes through, they're really zip box, to put it back. I don't know, I've seen it in other areas, but... I don't want to raise a ruckus, I just thought I'd just bring it over.
Take a look into it, please.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. That all, sir?
Yes, sir.
Great, great. Well, thank you very much. Any other citizens comments? Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Approved minutes, regular council meeting, September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. Can you get a motion? Motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries, four one. Incorporation ordinance ten dash one dash nineteen, and the amount of eighty-seven thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars and forty-three cents. Can you get a motion? Motion in a second, all in favor?
Just saw a bill from senior contractors for twenty-four hundred dollars, just about twenty-five hundred dollars for ice maker, wherever that is. I mean, don't you think we could buy a new ice maker for eighteen hundred dollars?
No, it'll make five hundred pounds a day. We got that, we got that one for free. I mean, we didn't pay a dime for it. We didn't realize it was going to be that high, I'll tell you right now. But that's, that's not a full, true bill, because he spent a couple hours at the water plant working on the, working on the water softener, too. It's not listed on there.
We got a bill from that last, my last meeting.
Oh, you did?
Yep.
I don't know, Ryan, you know? I mean, it's kind of like tearing into an air conditioner, I guess. You tear it apart, and that's what you get. I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not charged up about it by any means. I'll, I'll agree right with you. I didn't realize it was going to be that high. The pipe was bad in it, the board was bad in it. I mean, you know, we got two years out of it for absolutely nothing, and we had to put some money in it. We didn't know it was going to be that high. I mean, it's...
What's, what's it going to cost? Eighteen hundred dollars for a hundred and thirty thousand?
I mean, I guess we never even thought about looking into it. The one we had was working fine, and then it quit, so... I don't know. I mean, I guess it is what it is. We didn't realize it either, so...
Any other discussion?
I guess, I guess we're committed to keeping it going now. Like, is the way, I guess, I look at it. Or we're committed, or invested in it now, I guess.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries, four one. Okay, Greg Wright's not going to be here tonight. Okay, moving on, department heads. Jeff?
Uh, just a few things. First one is, I found somebody to look at the air conditioner on the bus. It's a mobile type deal, but he's based out of Salina. He's down right now. He said if we bring the bus up, he'd be glad to go through it and look at it. He doesn't feel like it might be major. He does coaches and school buses and reefer trailers and everything, I mean... But he said if we bring it up, he'd be glad to look at it. Might be a, might be an O-ring, might be a valve, you know? He said, but without going through it, old as that bus is, he just couldn't tell us. So I kind of made a verbal deal with him that I would talk to you tonight, and if it was all right, then we'd probably take it up. I want to give him a couple of weeks and take it up, like, maybe the seventeenth or eighteenth, and leave it for about a week, and let him have time to go through it. He's got two or three things he's working on right now. So I'd like to give him a couple of weeks ahead of it, and run it up there, and just let him go through it. I mean, it might be something reasonable, it might be something that scare you to death, but he said, till I crawl underneath it and look at it, he said, I can't tell you. He said some of those lines were in the floor, some of them weren't.
What is it, you're having a leak somewhere?
We put nine cans of free on it twice a year. So it's got problems. But, you know, Larry, Larry won't work on it anymore. I mean, he's worked on it twice. When, when Mel was here, you know, we put, we put a case of free on it once a year. So it didn't last two months or two and a half months, you know?
My opinion on it is, I mean, we have no idea what it'll cost, but it's kind of like that Cooper deal he brought up. Hopefully, we don't dump too much into it.
Yeah. I'd like to have him look at it first. You know, he told me he'd be glad to look at it and give us a, an estimate of what he thought it would take, so... But I told him that I'd talk to you, and if it was all right, we'll try and run it up there and let him go through it. And we've kind of canceled the bus routes for a week, and then we'll, when he calls, we're going to give it, or we'll leave it and have it fixed. So, anyway, I kind of left it at that. So... We ran engines today.
Do you guys want to keep our price point, so we don't run into the same situation?
What's that bus worth?
If you're going to replace it, it would probably be less than fifty or sixty, seventy.
I imagine.
Oh, come on, we're not talking a brand-new bus marshal. We could find a reasonable, huh?
Well, I think, you know, the thing about those buses is, though, that when you get them, they got their handicap accessible and that stuff. I mean, it dumps a lot of money into them. We weren't supposed to get that bus when we got it. It was appropriated for someplace else, and we ended up with it, and they left it here. It was a nicer coach than what the city was supposed to have. But now we've had it for twenty years. It's a ninety-seven, we've had it twenty-two years. You know, gotten a lot of use out of it, but, uh...
I'm sure it's going to cost more than we're, we're going to be set.
That costs more than it's worth.
I'll bet, I'll bet it's, I'll bet it's two or three thousand dollars. I might be wrong, it might be more than that, you know? But, uh, the guys at the place that built it don't want anything to do with it by working on it. It's back in that, in southeast Kansas, so... Anyway, I think ninety miles, pretty cheap run. We'll run it up there and let them look at it. Worst that can happen is that it'd scare you to death, and you tell them no. You put a windy unit, a generator on it, call it good. I don't know, but, uh... Anything container like that, you know, it's not going to be cheap, I'm sure.
You've called around to other places, right? Do you have any access?
I can't find very many people who want to work on it. I mean, that guy that I told you about in Valley Center, he wouldn't work on it. The guy at Elwood, he really didn't, he, he just acted like he didn't want to, after I finally got ahold of him. But the guy at Valley Center that does this, he, I never, he never got back with me, so...
How big of a deal would it be to put an RV air conditioner on that?
The biggest problem with doing that is, we can't get it back in the shop. It'll be too tall. It just barely clears the door now. We have no place to put it.
Does it have to be inside?
It's up to you guys. It's always, we've always tried to keep it inside, you know?
I've talked to, I also called Dad and did some calling around, talked to Troy, talked to Thermo King, or whatever it was. And Dad said, because we've put enough of them on, he wouldn't do it, because I think we had to add six batteries, an inverter, and it came to like three or five thousand dollars just to put this roof-type air on there that, with all the windows, it might not cool it, you know, if it had a summer.
They make aftermarkets for semis and stuff, you know, that would more than cool it, but the problem is, is, is trying to find a way to now, with that wheelchair lift on it, you know, you can't put it on the back, has an emergency door. You know, it's kind of put the way it's supposed to be built. Runs off the compressor on the front, I mean, you know, but...
Does that have to have to work all through it?
You know, I really don't know, Ross. I'm guessing it's in the floor.
You would think that, I mean, that must be a heck of a thing to keep up. You know, it's best they have it, it ain't that good.
I, I think, I think it will do decent, but yeah, I don't think, I don't think you'll scrape ice off the windows by any means, so...
I don't think we've got a choice, no matter how much we don't like it.
I mean, it's not going to cost much to have him look at it, anyway, you know?
I haven't had an air conditioner looked at all summer that costs less than a thousand.
Yeah, that's right.
So...
It's got a big compressor.
Low-low in bucks.
It's got a big compressor.
And we're trying to keep it limited down to where we can put it inside, you know? We don't have vandalism problems that way, and I think it lasts better, it looks better, you know, for being out of the weather, so... We just don't have many places to stick it. It clears that door by about eighty-four, that's it, so... Anything rooftop, takes some modification. So, anyway, that's kind of where we're at. But we'll run it up there, see what it costs. Don't cost much to talk, so, find out. We started both engines today. I had all the guys at the plant. Kind of went through the ritual. I had them help me a little bit here and there. I think they all picked up a little bit. It's a, you know, we're going to try and do it monthly, as much as we can, but it's a, it's a long learning curve. It really is. So, we'll just keep doing it. Some guys will pick it up, some guys probably won't. But, um, we're going to try and do it through the winter as much as we can, so... We got the last three streets. Chip seal, they're taken care of. We swept the edges of that on First Street that was done first. Didn't pick up very much material, most of it stepped down, so... Got a good scull on it, I think, and the others will do, as weather allows, so... We've started rodding some sewers. Going to try and go through the sewers that were cambered years ago. We have some that we know have problems, and we know they haven't gotten any better. So, before I call to see anybody, I'm going to try and get ahold of some guys. I'd like, I'm going to take some time off starting Monday, but I'll be in, out of here anyway. I'm going to try and get a price on what it costs per foot to have them cambered, so that we can basically look at the same pipe that they looked at fifteen years ago. We know we have one complete separation on a line already. It's going to require some major work. Till we look at it and see where the cracks have gotten worse, which I'm sure they haven't gotten any better, but take a look at it and see, but we'll get them rodded at first, so that we don't have that expense, and we'll see what the camera expense is to camera. It's about, somewhere between nine and ten thousand feet. Want to get ahold of the company down outside Wichita. The guy that did it the last time was from Hill City, I'm not sure he's still in business. There wasn't really a name on the deal, the, the stuff that I've got, that I've got to lose some, study, and see if I can find out, because I'm sure Mel used it because it was cheaper.
You say Hill City?
So, I'm going to call around. There's several guys that do it. I imagine we're looking at three to four dollars a foot, is what I'm guessing, so...
That's a lot of money.
Sure, it's a lot of money. Yeah, it is.
But, like, you're pretty certain that the eight or ten thousand foot line, pretty sure it's bad from years ago? That's why you're having to go through it?
It's got, it's got some pretty bad pictures from years ago, so I'm sure it hasn't gotten any better, you know? But we are going to rodd them really well, and we'll save that expense, and see what it costs to get the camera and then look at it, because we know we've got one that's going to require, obviously, some outside help to repair. It's broken, we need to, so... It's going to take more than the equipment and the stuff that we've got to put it back together. It's coming out of the manhole, it's broke off, so... There's going to be some labor involved there, some material and stuff, but we'll tackle that, we won't get into it, so...
Are you treating these sewer lines, these sap roots, and like foam?
We use a combination of two things. One of them is foam, and the other one is just an acid-based stuff that will kill the ruts, and all the tach to them. Some of the stuff we use is pretty foamy, some of it isn't. Whether it works or not, it does. I mean, it looks good, I guess, so... Until you, until you get inside of it and see it, you don't know whether what you've used has done any good or not. It's expensive enough, you hope it works, you know? A bucket of it's three or four hundred bucks, but...
Last meeting, Jason mentioned under the school. Does that sewer go down the alley between my house and the alley under, under the school? Or where does it go?
No, the one of yours goes up the alley and turns and goes west down Fifth Street.
Okay.
This one goes, this one goes under Anna Minnis's garage. Comes from Fourth Street, goes north under her garage, and comes up to Dale Fox's old house, Jennifer Harrison's. Turns and goes west under the school, and goes clear to West Street. That's what it does. It's a main line going to West Street. It picks up all this corner town. Everything in this corner town, from north to First Street. First Street has a line that picks up the stuff south and that, but everything north of that comes into this line. It's a long ways.
Have you taken a look at what it looks like underneath the building?
I have no way of knowing what it looks like.
Well, you can't run a camera through it?
I don't have a camera.
Well, I'll have to hire someone.
We'll have to have somebody do it, we'll get. That's part, it's on the list.
It's part of the eight to ten thousand. That's part of that?
Yeah, there's about seventy-two thousand foot line in town, and this is about the top ten or eleven thousand feet that really need to be looked at. Some of them got some really vicious cracks in them, you know? That clay tile's a hundred years old, I mean, it's, it's been around a long time, so... Some of them have hubs broke off, big cracks in them, you know, broke away from the pipe. There's just taps that have been broken off. There's just a lot of different things, but, you know, until we get them cleaned out, get them looked at, we really won't know what kind of... They do, there's, there's some... There's some, a sleeve made that you can put in those and line them. Just a matter of doing, going first to see what we see, and go from there and see what kind of attack we're going to make, so... I guess, other than that, that's really all I got left, so...
Are there any other questions for Jeff? Okay, moving on. Public facilities supervisor, Jason.
Well, the only thing I was going to have was talk, let Ross talk about that truck parking that we were talking about, let him go through what, or let you guys discuss it with what he knows.
He just wanted me to look at the size of it, I guess, and I talked to Marshall and I don't know, Brandon Marshall. I, I think, I, I was telling Jason, I thought maybe we didn't need to make it bigger, but I might actually be going to change my mind about that. If we'll make the whole entrance of that, which I haven't been down it since we worked it over at the graveyard, but if we'd make the whole entrance of that, a driveway and end in an outlet, you know, just the whole, from the property line to where the mark is, may, maybe we can get by with it, and also, maybe we should start small and get it utilized, get it rocked, and not make it bigger. I guess, maybe, until we find out we need more space, you know, walk before we run, maybe? But I, I think it's a great location. We're going to have to keep the road up and rock it and get the foundation on, but I think it's a great plan, and it's a good, it's a good access point for the trucks. I don't see how they'll, I mean, it's right off the highway, and I, and also, it lines right up, and we want to continue to get it formed, which I think we should, it's a great, I mean, it's not a headache for us on the other property. It lines right up with the fence, I mean, I think it will be big enough. I'm changing my mind on thinking it needs to be bigger.
Can they go straight through, they have to turn on the lot?
They'll have to turn.
That way they can, they have to turn?
Yeah, they'll have to, and, and if, if they got to go straight through, I just think it'll be, I think we'll have to make it twice as big, you know? I mean, literally. I, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not saying it's perfect, but if we'll make the whole width, an entrance and exit, you can pull out anywhere you want, you know, they can pull in from the east, pull in from the west, turn their loop back in, whatever. I, I think it'll work, I mean... I don't know. I, I don't know how many trucks truly are in the town. I, I rode around, I was telling Jason, and I counted like twenty-two, and I just couldn't believe that. You know, you don't really think there's that many until you drive down the street, and there's just a pile of trucks. I mean, there really is. There was like six on one street. There's a lot of trucks. But it was on a Sunday, and they're not all going to be in at the same time, but a lot of guys are in on a whole other weekends. But I think it's a good plan, other than just having enough material to keep the road good for when it does rain, and then also, just make the lot good where it's accessible. But I think we've got the right idea, for sure.
What did, what'd you guys decide if you wanted them to be metered or non-metered?
I don't know, I guess...
That's a big, that's a big discussion right there.
I, I think...
And then that's also going to, that'll also tell us what kind of material, or what stuff we need to get pedestals, or how are we going to price that out? Underground?
Just my opinion, I would say just meter the, meter the whole thing.
Just one meter?
Don't individually meter it, because you never know if someone's going to park it, or you're supposed to park, or, you know, and also, maybe entice some of those guys to go out there and park, you know? You know, I know it's not going to be, maybe we can save that on our streets, you know, not have to prepare the streets as much by giving them free electricity.
You can do an annual permit.
That's right. If we, if we go a year and we analyze that it's got out of hand, there's twenty trucks parked in there two days a week, with block heaters six months a year, maybe we need to have an annual permit that it's fifty bucks a year to park your truck there, or something like that. But I, I don't think it's going to get out of hand that, in one winter, a six-month period, we can reanalyze it, revisit it. I, I don't think.
What are you, what was your thoughts about when you, when you pull in, and you want them facing back towards the north? Where do you think we ought to put those pedestals? Either head-to-head in the center, or most of them out by the front, and then they park and pick up that close?
I, I think they're going to have to have, this is where I think your main road parking is going to be, is off the back south fence, this is my opinion. So we need to come in fifteen feet or something, and maybe lay some telephone poles just down on the ground, where if they back up, their trailer tires will hit it, and they won't, you know, they can't back into the fence. Where they're going to be facing north, then we need to mock that up. Basically, it's going to be seventy feet from where the back of the trailer is. I mean, that's going to be the majority of the length, and that'll be your first road. But I think, keeping it that narrow, and I was telling Marshall, is we're going to have to, the back row, you know, we'll fill that, I'm sure, and then we might have to come forward and make another road. I mean, we might have to have, you know, the whole width in the back, and then in front of them, a half road, you know? In the middle, third, because I don't think we can get them all one line, you know? I mean, we're land, we're landlocked.
Right.
I think, let, I mean, if anybody else's got a opinion, then that's just me. Geographically, I don't think we have a choice, unless we, unless we use the whole darn thing double the size of it.
Well, that's what I want to be sure, you know? If you put them in the center, then we can sit there and go like this, and then they can back up, and, and then this, and they can just go around like that. That's why I just didn't know.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I don't... You need to make it as, as easy as possible, just to prevent the rest of the problems that could come with it, you know, I guess, is the way I look at it.
How well does it drain? Does water get on, I have one, does water get off the lot where, tomorrow morning it'd be a bit, a little difficult to get your truck down?
That's right. I, I guess this is the way I look at it, is I assume we're going to elevate it a decent amount regardless. I'm not saying it's low, I'm not saying it's high, but we're surely going to elevate it with our material. I mean, it's not going to get any lower to begin with, but then, the more trucks you park, the lower it's going to keep getting, you know? It's, it's going to be some maintenance, we're going to have to take it on, and from the street to the highway, I mean, that's going to have to be a good road. It's going to have to be a good road, so... But I think it's the right idea. I, I do, I think it's the right idea. If we want to get them off the streets, which everybody does.
Any other discussion? Anybody else have questions for Jason? Moving on, public works supervisor, David.
I got a couple quotes here. Top one is for the stabilizer valve on the backhoe. We had it rebuilt by Murphy Tractor here, probably a week ago, two weeks ago, and it still sprays oil out when it's under pressure, like, we're digging with it or something, or we have the outriggers out. They said they, if we brought it in, they'll replace, if it's a seal or something like that, it's no charge to us, being they just did it. But we put, we took it off, took it up to them, put it back in. So, now what I'm asking is to take it up there, have them look at it, and see if it needs to be rebuilt again for free. Hopefully, it's like a seal or something like that. If not, that price is a worst-case scenario. I don't remember what it was, Ross.
Twenty-three, twenty-three fifty. Twenty-five hundred fifty.
Then add about three hundred bucks for a brand-new valve box where the hydraulic hoses hook up, from the outriggers, part of the hook. The other quote is, or, two outrigger cylinders itself needs to be repacked. They're starting to, starting to leak, being we're using it a lot more. We've done four or five water services that were on list to be done, and it just kept getting worse and worse. I mean, it's a ninety-seven. I don't have anything on my sheets that we've ever done to it. Something that, maintenance-wise, I mean, just trying to keep up with it. And they would let us demo rental up there for free, while they had ours in the shop.
We got to haul it, they'll have to come pick that up?
I, I mentioned Jeff.
County, take it out?
Yeah, the county said they would, or they get stones to haul all their stuff. But county is probably just cheap.
Phil said he'd be glad to haul it up, just to let him know.
That we don't have a ones-on-dooley, or, you know, pickup to haul it.
Yeah, you can't do it.
But that's just, that's way over my spending deal, but I wanted to bring it in, because something needs to be done. I mean, it's just going to cause problems. Or keep causing problems. We need to get it fixed. And I can't pull in somebody's, you know, back up to somebody's yard to dig out a water plane when I got a whole lot of work.
There's no telling where it's come from. We don't have any inclination whether it's...
It's, it's coming out of the valve on the stabilizer part of it.
So we, we...
It's narrowed down.
There's a good chance that top bill's irrelevant then, because it's that big?
It's the worst-case scenario.
Yeah, but I mean, we're going to be able to, I guess what I mean is, we're going to be able to support it, make them honor it if they did do it, and we will try to hold their, hold them true to it.
David, I don't know if he's a manager or who it is up there. What they're going to look at first, being they couldn't test it, being we took it up there, and we put it on. If it is a seal or, you know, O-ring or something like that, you know, they fix it up, it's on that, being they just did it. This way, that, you know, we take it up there, they can test it, they can heat, you know, warm it up, do a little digging, whatever they need to, to test it, make sure it's going to hold. If it ain't, that's the worst-case scenario. And we said add about three hours of labor, which is about three hundred bucks, to install it. And, uh, kids to rebuild them cylinders, eleven forty-one seventy-two, for B and B to do two cylinders, it was five hundred and forty-eight bucks. That's us taking it off, us running the hutch, coming back, going back up, picking it up, coming back, putting it on. Um, so it, it basically evened out with fuel, time, and all that, to just have them do it if they're, if they have the machine up there.
It's got to be fixed. It's not going to get cheaper now.
It'll fix itself.
Hopefully.
It's just the best reason.
Well, hopefully, that twenty-three hundred is on there.
Yeah.
I mean, that's eleven hundred and fifty-eight bucks is what we paid for. Try to fix it, I guess.
Really?
Yeah, it's right there. Yeah, it's okay.
And that's why he asked for the machine to be up there, so they can test it and run through it, if it was that same problem, they wouldn't charge us for it, but if it is the actual cylinder, 'cause he told me that there was a little burr on, and I'm not sure how it works, but there's two valves that go in and out, and one had like a burr on it, not too bad, well, I'm thinking that maybe they ground it off a little bit or smoothed it up, I'm wondering if that didn't cut a seal or an overing. That's just me guessing, because he did say they'd have a burr and they smoothed it up, well, how do you know? You know, I am hoping that's all it is. But without, you know, with us taking it off, you know, we have no clue, you know, till we put it on.
We're gonna do it, Council.
Take it up there and open that stuff when they did it first time. Unless we shoot about twenty-three hundred one to begin with.
I mean, it's coming out the same spot it was before, so I'm guessing it's the same, you know, we took it up. But I can guarantee.
Jamie, okay that, or we just give you information? Make a motion to give Dave permission to take the backhoe at Murphy Tractor, as long as the amount doesn't exceed two points, he was given, get it fixed, and if it is their responsibility to fix it, ensure that we don't pay for repair of the valve, except for just the certain factors. Do you have a voice number?
Yeah, I don't have a quote. Usually I include this, it's two points, the numbers, it's two points. Yes, including amounts.
Okay. To not exceed on the valve, twenty-three hundred forty-seven forty-three cents, and...
Plus the labor.
Plus an additional three hundred for labor, I apologize. So let's just do twenty-six fifty. And for the repacking of the cylinders, this is labor included, eleven hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-two cents.
Sorry. Okay, motion aside, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Any other questions for Jason? That's good, you're for David.
The only other thing I have is about Jason's pickup. Made contact with him, and he called me back, GM's on strike, didn't know when the truck was gonna be done, the only thing different that he told me before is the price of the new truck has gone up a thousand dollars, he said it didn't matter if it was four months ago, or if it's six months from now, the new truck is a thousand dollars more, so total was fifteen hundred bucks, got swapping out the beds, plus the truck. And I did all my digging I could to find where it had that piece of paper, and I cannot find it, but he said, "I'm not gonna eat the thousand bucks, because it doesn't matter when we did it, the new body style is more, so you're gonna pay more," I mean, he was kind of a...
First year's fifteen hundred, the next year's three grand, and then that'll be six grand, watch.
It's one of those deals.
We haven't got the first one or two yet.
It's too good to be true, yeah.
Oh, well. We haven't bought tires, I mean, I see two sides to it, I mean, we can't do, we can't mount things to it.
If I could trade every year for fifteen hundred dollars, I'd do it in a heartbeat. It'd be as a generator. Jim, you'd do it, wouldn't you?
Two heartbeats.
At least you have a heartbeat.
Well, you won't have this, you won't have this for this.
I don't, I don't think it matters, like fifteen hundred dollars.
Keep pounding and get it done.
You can't even hardly put a set of tires on for fifteen hundred.
That's exactly right.
Just a little.
Yeah, I guess if we don't, just go with it. Just stay on top of them, David's all I'm asking.
He's just, he's still trying to get it worked out, right?
I'm supposed to go on tomorrow.
They're still standing on the pitch.
Anything else, David?
No, that's all.
Okay, anybody else got any questions for David? Okay, moving on, do we hear anything from Grant Minister, or Lisa Conmore? Okay, Police Chief?
Uh, just a couple things, talked to Tori tonight, Officer Perez, looks like she's gonna be voted in as president of the class there at KLET C, she's started her fourth week, doing really well, top of her class, so I'm pretty proud of her, and she's doing good, so, the other thing is, I put a letter in your packet, if you guys get a chance, come up, see, we're really making some changes, and really trying to change some things around here, so, and we've got a lot of things coming down the line, starting show program, the students helping out Warriors, I'll be starting that program this Friday, both for middle school and high school, so, and then we will be putting on a Veterans Day breakfast, November eleventh, with that group in conjunction with the school, so, and we've got a couple other things that I'll brief Council on down the road that we're gonna be doing with the schools, so, quite a bit going on, so, I've been sitting with meetings with the principals, looking at some new, other extracurricular activities there at the school that I may end up getting roped into helping coach, but it's gonna be good, I'm excited about it, and trying to, trying to get some more involvement here, so, that's all I have.
Veterans Day, did you say at the school?
Yes.
Lodge normally has a Veterans Day lunch, I mean breakfast.
On Veterans Day?
Hot fellows' lodge, yeah. See, like, yeah.
I'll give Mr. White, I didn't know that, since I was here for last Veterans Day, well, I'll give Mr. White then, and we'll see if we can't...
We could do it in conjunction.
Do something in conjunction, yeah, we'll figure something out, yeah, we'll make it, we'll make it work. Okay, thanks.
I was saying, thank you for that. Have Council speak here for everybody, to tell her congratulations for being top of the class, tell her, just talk to her.
Will do. We enjoy our Friday night meetings, she's learning a lot, and she's enjoying, she's ready to be done and come back and get to work, but she's learning a lot and doing well, I am gonna take a day in October, I believe, and go up to the academy, one, I'm gonna have lunch up there with her, but they need guest instructor, guest role players for some of their scenarios, so, I'm gonna see if SO won't cover for the day, and I can go up there and be a role player, it'd be good to, I wanna see her working through scenarios and stuff, I think it'd be really good, so, kinda hard when we don't have a, we don't know when we're gonna have something to be able to evaluate and see where they're at, so that'd be, that'd be a good day for me, so, but I will let her know, absolutely.
We'll be getting a lot of positive feedback from the homecoming parade, and you're involved in it, so, I think a lot of people we're very happy about, so thank you for that.
Yeah, we've got some things already in the works for next year's homecoming parade, gonna try and make it a little bit better, a little bit more involvement, me and Jamie talked, and then, like I said, I spent about five hours in the principal's office, which was a good time this time, so it was enjoyable to do that, so, yeah, we're doing well, we're doing real well.
How are we doing on applicants?
We're doing good, I just got three more, so I'm getting ready, well, tomorrow morning, I'll probably hop around all night and get that going, so, I do have, I'm hoping, one applicant for a part-time position, hopefully I'll know something next week, looking pretty positive, and that'll be a really good pickup, just like with Officer Perez, that'll be a good pickup as a part-time for us, no chance of going full-time, just 'cause they're in law enforcement elsewhere, but it'll be a great part-time pickup for us.
Anybody have any questions for Chief? Thanks, Chief. Okay, anything from Park Chief, Michael Center? Okay, Jamie?
I don't have anything, I'll be gone... I'll be gone tomorrow. I have the Kansas Leadership Center training with that class that you guys approved for currently training things, they shortened it, the kid, I guess, call him a kid, the guy that got struck by lightning in Andover running that race was part of the Kansas Leadership Center, and so his funeral's on Friday, so they're cutting our session short, which will be fine, but I'll probably stick on Friday, my grandma has been in the hospital since last Tuesday, so, she's up there, so I'll probably stay up there Friday and spend some time up there, but other than that, I think everything's good, we were gonna start painting the office this week while I was gone, since I can't be around it, but we're gonna postpone that till next month, too, so, other than that...
Do we need to look for somebody maybe part-time to help Jamie out?
I have tried to talk to her about that, we go both ways, I'm gonna have the computer at home, and I'll come in and get the stuff signed, sometimes when we have people helping, it ends up being more of a headache than not.
I just didn't want her left here.
Right, yeah.
Do it all on her, if she wanted to help.
Right, no.
Find someone part-time for a little bit.
We've had multiple conversations about it, and she would rather not, these phone systems will actually help, well, I feel like they'll help, we got our phones updated, so that kinda gives people more of an option when they're calling, like, hey, we're not just ignoring you, and we have the hours set up to where, I mean, the only thing will be that she might need a little overtime if, but she, I have no doubt she can handle it.
I just throwing it out there to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll, I mean, I'll be four blocks away, so, and like she said, if you stay away your entire maternity leave, I'll be surprised, so, I'm sure I'll have to get out of the house.
Anything else, Jamie?
No.
Anybody have any questions for Jamie? Okay, John?
Nothing, guess I'm boring.
Anybody got any questions for John? Okay, all right, moving on to old business, West Street.
It's located, so you probably know, I was gonna pull it this week, I'm not doing it, I'm not creating a sloppy mess, that I'm probably gonna have to shut down, 'cause it's too muddy to go on that south side, so I'm trying to hold off, the locate's good for fifteen days, I just call in another one, I'm hoping to get it in that fifteen days, but we are working on it.
Plan was to use the melings that we took out?
And I wanna get with Phil, too, and see, kind of, maybe we can work together to finish that out, going to the south, and get it completely away from town, hopefully.
Any questions on West Street? Hey, moving on, Tom?
An update on it?
Is what it is.
Is what it is.
Yeah.
So, for everyone that has been asked, we are gonna wait till spring to put it back together.
Yeah, we can't forget about it, for sure, we're not gonna... Nobody's gonna forget about it.
We'd like to put it together and do it all as a dedication at one time, close to Memorial Weekend, so, you know, hate to erect it, fill it up, test it, drain it, leave it set all winter and do it in the spring, so, it's in good shape over in the shop, tucked away, it's fine, so...
Go ahead, take that off, take your whole business, Jamie. Okay. Okay, here, we have a special meeting, and it's in conjunction with the truck parking, we talked a little bit about this earlier in the meeting, so...
We gotta decide a date, I guess?
Yeah.
On that date?
What'd you find at the commissioner's meeting on our possession of these, or we can go through?
Haven't heard yet.
Can't set a date till we find out, I mean, we wanna try to do it all at once, don't we?
We can't still go in the properties?
I have no idea.
Well, I can tell you one thing, the last ones I bought, I went in on the same day I bought, just like everybody else does.
I just don't wanna be out there doing it in the middle of December either.
Well, why don't you do the truck parking lot now, and then do the other set? So you have to set a date for the special meeting? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have to, but that's what you guys requested.
Yeah, we go all day at a time, 'cause I think we're probably gonna have to start a little sooner than seven o'clock. I don't know what everybody's...
Does five work, or a weekend?
Five was wonderful.
I bet you it's gonna take us two hours to do this all.
Well, we're not gonna do the housing, if we're gonna bring that truck parking lot for days, two hours, bring a big team manager out, and all this, you're at five o'clock next meeting, what's wrong?
I think order approving the sheriff's second sound would be comfortable.
So really, if it's approved, we actually have legal possession?
I mean, I don't know how...
I mean, other than getting the... Getting the excellent deed, I mean, if they approve it, then it's pretty much that spell, isn't it?
I'd set it for next council meeting. Hopefully, yeah. Next council meeting, yeah.
Couldn't we just change the next council meeting time, and then not do a special meeting?
Well, we're gonna do this, well, if you could.
So you wanna do a meeting, we can do all that?
Do we just have to add that to the agenda or something, or what? I like the idea of putting it at five o'clock, and let it separate.
Well, why don't you, I mean, all this property, though, is gonna be on the landbank.
Yeah, the truck lot is gonna be in conjunction with the council meeting, and all the properties are gonna be on the landbank.
So why don't you, can you start at the truck lot, and then go in the landbank, so it's on a landbank, so, so you do like, you go with truck lot, and the truck lot, and go into...
Go into landbank.
Landbank.
I'm just gonna tell you guys, if you do this next council meeting, they're gonna have a four and a half or five-hour council meeting, because Greg will be here at the next one.
Bring your flashlights, is that your power on this house?
So we wanna have this at five?
Or would you rather do it a different date?
I, I don't care, I'll make it work.
I was thinking, maybe...
I think all of us are pretty flexible.
I just don't wanna burn up two guys.
A mid-afternoon, late afternoon on a Sunday, or a Saturday?
For a couple hours?
I'll make it work.
If we're gonna do that, why don't we do it on a Saturday? Is everyone in agreement with that?
I prefer a Sunday. They're making, you guys, I don't, I'm just showing them, we can just do it on the Saturday, we're having a council meeting.
I agree, let's just do it on Wednesday, is anybody on board with that? I'd say the next council meeting, move it to five o'clock.
I don't wanna do it on council meeting night, I'd rather have, I'd rather do it following Wednesday after our next council meeting.
Two meetings, two nights?
I would rather have one night dedicated to solely this and this alone.
Do the landbank, do the truck lot before our next meeting, and then the landbank totally separate?
We could, I mean, I don't have a problem meeting out there at six fifteen next meeting to go over the truck lot deal, and then we can do the rest of it as soon as we get the deeds and...
Yeah.
And you can even just call landbank meeting.
Yeah, that's right, well, just do it second.
I mean, we can do a completely separate landbank meeting to discuss them.
Yeah.
Not even have it as a...
So it'd be the Wednesday after the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, if you guys wanna change the next meeting...
We'll just set landbank meeting next week.
Yeah.
That works.
Because we don't get into it.
But I think if you wanna meet out there and go over the truck parking, we can do it, I'd do it before next meeting, yes.
Do we have any ordinance or anything, have I done anything like that, establishing a truck lot, did we, is that part of that stuff that we looked at?
It's a truck lot.
That was just the truck route?
Yeah, we didn't think we were there yet, she was checking in on how other towns...
Let me know when you're ready to start looking at something.
We've gotta have a place to...
We're a decent little ways away from being there yet, I mean...
But it still would have hurt to have a...
I think you started a truck, uh...
Ordinance resolution.
We looked at some ordinance stuff, whenever you get real far, when it's going up, how much it would be.
I don't remember.
I don't know what hurt, probably start on it, just so we could also be reviewed on it, as we go along.
That's far enough, yes, I'm just not visualizing exactly where it's at, no residents around there, is there...
So, strap north of the water plant, if you want, through.
So, strap north of the water plant, if you want, through the street lot, fence, where it's counted.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
So if the truck lot, we're not gonna get a call in the land bank? Okay, just do one thing, that's what I'm...
There's a guy on there, out there. It's just off of eight three, definitely, I don't know.
Strack Street.
John, is that sufficient to change the time of the meeting?
Long eight streets, we're sad. So we'll have to make this...
Change size, uh, conversion, to change the application.
Can we do that right now, while we're talking about this?
Get a motion on that one?
I'd make a motion that we change next council meeting to six o'clock, to meet at the proposed truck parking.
Well, not everybody has to be, you guys don't have to.
No, if they want to, no, yeah, as council.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
You guys don't have to.
Here, out there.
I'd say meet out there at six, and we'll start the meeting there, and then we'll reconvene back here.
Yeah, we do that. Okay, have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to street signs.
There are order...
No idea on timeframe when they're gonna get in?
Four hundred and sixty-two signs to be made. Any other discussion? Moving on, Witt Center repairs.
How many bids, Jamie?
I have two bids. I have two bids.
Copy source?
Okay, so, this is from Isai's. He provided some pictures, I think.
I took some pictures of some stuff that we could possibly take, taking a look at later. But for now, I just did what Jamie told me to pull. You guys look at those pictures. It's mostly, I think, the mince bathroom, the floor, vanity, just doing those two things would make it look a lot better in there. And then the outside, uh, the siding's looking like in rough shape. I wouldn't say it needs fixed right away, but I would certainly look at it after this part's done. I just took those pictures, I think, that we're just gonna look at them. Other than that, I mean, basically, we discussed it all, the flooring, and the lobby area, red brick, separate bid. Baseboard and walls and the skating rink. The back corner was really bad. It's hard to tell, like, on that one, exactly what it needs, but on my bid. I wrote down my price to fix it. My bid has a no-heddy piece, what it says there is what it's gonna cost. Can you give us copies of that? Neil has to be there now, before the interview.
I think the difference on this is gonna be, I think Ben, sorry, Ben quoted to not put carpet in. He suggested to polish the concrete, so you don't continue to have the cost of the carpet in the maintenance of the carpet.
And that's in this bid?
I think so. Re-look at, I have looked at it perfectly.
Is that the total it is? As far as going with, 'cause he's got...
Through that one? I haven't looked, I haven't looked through that one as close.
Can I take your hands when you get on?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I'm trying to let everybody read it, but yeah, just, just...
And just, just for purpose of opening... Isai's news has been about reading the other one, right?
That's the reason we held the last one.
Can't change it now? It's finally... I just wanna read the copy. I'll tell you what, that's the one I'm... Actually, we have more, just a couple bids on it, so...
Ross said it best, you know, contractors are busy with it, like, I mean, they have enough work for it. He probably has a...
Total, total.
It's on the back that, but it's not on your copy.
Oh, shit.
Sorry.
Tired from secretary.
Tell me, office workers are hard. You tell them the prices. So the price for, the price on the back is seven thousand fifty dollars.
Was that for him anyway? 'Cause see, I don't understand, he's got removed, prep and grind and polish main floor, eighty-one, eight thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars. Unless that's a break, huh?
I mean, as much as I can understand it, yes. That's why we hired him, right?
So basically, the walls.
See, 'cause it looks not, I think, the...
Now, put it over here.
Did you get a little better, did you get in contact with him?
You know, I don't, I mean, if you guys want, you guys can, yeah, come in.
Well, he might, if he connects the dots, maybe it'll make a little more sense, he can email us, maybe.
The option right here, 'cause he, for the main floor, which is where the kids hang out, where the benches are at, so to remove the carpet and install new carpet, seventy-five, eighteen. To remove the carpet and polish that floor is eighty-one, ninety-two. And then to, I'm assuming when it has the carpet baseboard, 'cause the baseboard, I think, is like a two-by-six. And to remove that carpet and reinstall it, it's twelve eighty-four. The walls, simply only the walls and the actual skating rink to remove and replace is ninety-four, thirty-six. I mean, this is all like adding it up, but the only part he got options on is the main floor to either put carpet in or polish it. And...
So those totals just aren't added in here?
It's supposed to skate.
I have it. So, and then for the, he's got the countertop, remove existing countertop. So the whole top would be redone with epoxy. And it wouldn't be carpet anymore, but the walls, I mean, that quotes up here. Counter wall carpet. And, uh, it looks like direct offices separate. It's its own floor and its own baseboard. So, I mean, you have the total there already. You just have options for one name. What was the price on the back? What did the other one show?
Seven thousand fifty.
But it's...
So he's giving you options on the left, and not putting in totals on the right, so the totals are on the right, or just to set prices?
Seven thousand on the back, but doesn't make sense, because...
I, I don't, maybe we're gonna understand that they talk in... I don't want that amount of totals over on the right, but on the left. I'm sure on the back, it's...
Well, if, if you can add up the two numbers in the front, add up the setup?
No, of course. Well, these, these, uh, these... What's that?
Isai, if you plan on, if you want to, you know, these four, if I don't think he's ever been...
No, it wasn't gonna be new board.
You think you can sell to the door, to the house, or place, or anything else around it?
Basically, the framing, and then she brought the paint by the door. I thought the door...
Let's see if this, that first bid has any, had the door in it, or yours did.
Clarify some of this for council, so we can make a better, informed decision on this, please.
Email it to us for next meeting if you can.
Okay. Okay, move on to WSU Strategic Plant.
That's just on there, so we cannot forget about it till January.
All right. Or Power Plant, we discussed that last.
Um, I do have more to add, not really on the power plant, but I talked to Greg a little bit, when he called, and said that he had something come up today. And I was talking to him about the Midwest Energy Bill. And he, he pretty much called it congestion pricing, is what we're looking at, and it, it's not gonna matter, the old contract compared to the new contract. We're still saving the money. If we were in the old contract, it would've been the ten thousand dollars more. It's that one megawatt and below at the fixed price. So everything that's, the price of, the price of everything above that is what is high, just because of the market and, and the way things are going. But he said, in the past, we've always seen the other side of the pendulum, and we haven't ever experienced, I don't know about haven't ever. But the last several years, we haven't experienced the high side of things. And it's just the way the market's been going, it has been going down.
So, so when they, when they mass charge it like that, what it is, is it's basically, they're rats after the same piece of cheese. Where you got two-thirds of the country that's hot at the same time, the market's just gonna take what the market will bear. It's no different than anything else, only when the price is up there and the demand is high. You know, I, I think the part that she didn't tell you was that we billed out almost forty thousand dollars more than what we normally do, too, which covered, you know, it made, what it did was, it made the wholesale price rather five cents, which is about a... An early winter price. You know, is about what we pay in the early winter per kilowatt. So, um, bargain, maybe not, but still cheaper than what you could generate it. So, you know, it's a, when, when you're in the, when you're in the, the demand part of the day, whatever the market's gonna bear is what it's gonna cause. When everybody's after the same piece of cheese, it's, you know, they can only produce so much. We never did get to the point that we had to generate, but there was a couple of times, I wonder. So, hopefully, it won't happen too much, right? We had, we had an awful August.
And he said it had nothing to do with our usage, or, or billing, or anything. He said it was just the way the market was right now.
It's just the market.
'Cause I told him we were gonna put together that graph, and he said that it wouldn't matter.
Yeah, it wouldn't matter.
'Cause we weren't, we weren't, um, we weren't that off on our normal...
Our usage was up, but it was, you know, I think we billed, I think Pam said about thirty-eight thousand more or something than we normally do, but, you know? I mean, it was thirty thousand dollars higher than what we normally do, so the market price was just there. Our offbeat grade was still what we were guaranteed to take, but the offbeat grade was high. We are looking at doing the bonded indebtedness to another generator. We still have to look at the margin from what we're buying, like just for what we're selling, and realizing that every budget, ninety percent of what we budget for the city comes out of the sale of electricity, whether it's police department, street department, or whatever. So, if you're going to, it's just not free and fair for what electricity sales, we're still funding the entire city virtually out of the sale of electricity and utilities. So we might be crunching our numbers a little tight.
And Greg will be here, at the meeting for the ordinance to, or at the meeting with an ordinance to retain the savings back, like we had discussed in the beginning stages of, of all of this.
I'm not against the power plant in any way, shape, or form, because I can see a lot of advantages, but... You also need to know that you're running right of the contract, too. I mean, you don't have any margin. I mean, with what, with what we make, and what are, and what we purchase at half a megawatt, we are right at the top of it. If we have a bag, you don't have any room, you don't have any flexibility at all, so...
And I'm sending...
That's where we're at. What's our KW capacity? Right now, about, uh... That we could generate? Thirty-four hundred. Thirty-four hundred KW? We ran thirty-three, thirty-two this year. Okay. Plus the five hundred we buy, but we have to be able to do fifteen percent. Generator that you, which you had looked, is how many, what's the capacity of that new generator? Thirteen sixty, it's just like the one that's sitting down here, yeah. So, that's twenty percent, roughly thirty percent. Thirty percent more capacity. Do we have any way that, where, or place that we can sell excess components, set it for a generator in excess, can we feed it back and sell it? We push it back to them. It's either credited on the bill, and, you know, I mean, meter turns both ways. So we put, we're pushing... Yeah, we push some back today, yeah. So what's the differential between what we buy and what we sell, or is it the same? It's the same. Same, it's a bunch. It's the same. This comes off of what we buy.
The thing is, though, if we hit over the peak of what we're allowed, we pay that for a whole year, correct? That price?
I'm not sure how this new contract's gonna work, I can't...
It's how the old contract worked, but...
I'm just paying it for twelve months.
I understand, you know, we don't wanna forfeit the contract.
You'll lose ten years. You'll lose ten years of that contract if you miss it.
I, I already asked it, but the money we're saving off of that, did we allocate that that's going in like a certain account, or that's just dumped back into general funds?
No, it just sets it, it just sets in the electric fund, is where it sets, till the end of the year.
That's the effect in May?
April.
April?
Yeah. Yeah, it is, it just sets in there till the end of the year, because it's budgeted through the electric, and then at the end of the year, then whatever's left rolls back into the general.
We're almost six months. Is there any way you can compare two thousand nineteen, six months, least April to October, to two thousand eighteen? Can you give us a figure?
I can compare the Midwest Energy Bills, but like, the money that we've saved is technically...
I mean, that'll be a direct correlation, won't it?
To a point.
I mean, within, within a ten percent...
I mean, you know, yeah, it depends on the purchase.
Right.
You know, you just have to look at the basic line items as you go down, and see where you're pushing or where you're pulling. Oh, it should, it should give you an idea, yeah.
I was just trying to...
And it is, Ross, I mean, I looked, I looked a year ago, because we approved sixty-seven thousand.
Right.
And a year ago, the first of October, our Midwest Energy Bill that we approved, that meeting... And a year ago, the first of October, our Midwest Energy Bill that we approved that meeting was forty, forty-eight or forty-nine thousand dollars. So I mean, there's almost a twenty thousand dollar difference from last year to this year, just in the October bill. Now, last month was completely different because it was way higher.
Right.
But I mean, compared to what we paid, what we approved tonight, compared to what we approved a year ago tonight, was about twenty thousand dollars.
It was cheaper.
Right, it's the wrong way.
It was cheap, yeah. It was cheaper.
I guess what I was meaning is how much we're saving, I guess maybe this is the way I should say it, how much we're saving on our margin of, of units on.
Yeah, you have to do that by line because you'd have to do it by kilowatts and by SPP and all that stuff.
But I mean, it could be compared. Ten thousand four was a buck or.
Right. I, I get, I, I was just trying to get, I don't have a grasp on that. A dollar amount is what I was wanting.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't know whether, whether we're a hundred grand ahead in six months, whether we're thirty-five thousand ahead or we're a hundred and sixty thousand ahead. I don't.
We just have to take the, we just have to take the kilowatts that we ran last year from this year and see.
Right, right. I mean, it's a, it's, it's coming up on the six months. It would be a good time to analyze it and also it's to our best six months of electricity.
And I don't, Greg, Greg probably has that. He could probably show it to us.
That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, he pulls it every month. He charts it.
I mean, because that's, that's when he was in here, he showed us all that of, I mean, if he gets.
Yeah, has that for next meeting?
But I mean, he had a graph that showed, and I think he can probably throw one together real quick that we showed the last six months compared to.
He does it monthly the way it is.
Because you can't, I mean, I don't think you can go right off the bill.
It's tough to do.
No, it's, it's not the, it's not the, it's the billable margin.
It's where, it's where you set on the scope of what the day is is what you did. Yeah, sure, I understand.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah. Because I mean, your price can fluctuate all the time. It's basically what you're paying no matter what, whether you sell none or a whole bunch.
Right.
You're still paying the price, the guaranteed price every month. And that's what we got away with with the new contract.
Yeah. Went from ninety-eight seventy to seventeen fifty.
Yes.
Thank Greg. Give or take a few bucks on the high end. It's very optimized, very optimized.
Thank you, Greg. For consulting information. Any more discussion? Okay, moving on. City Health Nurse.
Did you guys hear out what you wanted to get figured out?
Did you get anything?
I spoke with the commissioners. You know, I just kinda asked them. It's always been that the, the county health nurse has always helped out cities. It doesn't matter what city it is. I did mention to them, I said, you know, there's, there's times that she does stuff after hours on her own time, cuts the cord if she has to. Possibility of us maybe reimbursing her for some of that. They had no issue with it. Whatever we wanted to do, they were fine. But it is something that they just, it's kind of part of their job.
She get like salaries from the county or she?
I'm sure she's paid salaries.
Not for the county, but she works for the farm.
She's, she's strictly just a county health nurse. And I would assume she's just a salary position.
She said anything about working out of your hours?
And this was all just you and I talking and seeing our options. Cause we didn't know, like, if there was a contract. It was basically.
I think it's just one of the things that City of St. John falls within Stafford County and if it's a health violation, she's in charge of it.
Yeah, it is, but I think, um, his deal was if we have that incentive for her, she'll get back with him faster where we can get the process.
And obviously can, where it kind of worries me is I mean, all the crime that happens in St. John occurs with county staff too.
Right.
Just one of those things that was just gonna, a pass the buck thing that's just gonna hit us when all this stuff is ringing out. It's a whole lot concerning.
It's kind of one of those, I look, I look at, if you take the professional out, the professional, if she's a county health nurse, so salary employee from the county, that might just be part of the territory.
I mean, she does have a separate point in the city and I suppose if the city wanted to, it could go in some way, but it's always just been health nurse.
That's always just. That's why I was thinking she did have a problem with it.
It's not broke, don't fix it.
Yeah. It's broke.
I mean, I, I don't know.
I like making things.
I think it's part of the territory.
I, I do. I totally agree.
Okay.
All right.
You probably cross that off the list too.
Can I take that off?
Yes.
Okay.
You guys are gonna miss me when I'm gone.
We still have you for two ears.
Okay. All right, moving on to, uh, new business, uh, police vehicles.
All right.
Come here with a sheet of lumber on your own boat now.
I had to look at the date, see if April fools felt today.
No, not yet. Not yet, but, um, so.
It's a, it's an agenda item, isn't it?
It, uh.
Should I put it up top?
Okay, um, all right, so, that's what I'm coming to you denied with is after, after you guys appointed me as chief six months ago, pretty much this month, um, kinda taking a look at everything and, and what, uh, what we're doing. Before I get into specifics of, uh, of why, I'll just kinda go over that first page. Um, so call around on a two thousand twenty-four F-150 four-by-two crew cab. Their price is forty-one thousand eighty-five dollars. We have an expired fleet number, uh, that I've gotten regenerated back to the city for us. And with having that fleet number, that cut it, cut the price down to twenty-eight thousand seventy-three dollars is what the truck's price is now. And then on the back pages there, it's got what all's included in that package and everything. Cost to outfit the unit, uh, parts, labor, cage, um, radar, everything is, uh, is six thousand seventy-five dollars. That's actually on the high side. Um, everything's padded just a little bit. I did call Tim who would, who does the outfitting for the sheriff's department and, and has, uh, worked on our vehicles. Talked to him going down the list of prices. So the total cost of the truck would be thirty-four thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars and that's for everything patrol ready and on the street done. My plan or what, my plan on, on building this proposal was, was we have the old, uh, shippy pickup that's sitting in the city shop right now. Has a light bar. It does have an eight hundred radio and a siren box in it. The siren box isn't the greatest and that radio isn't the greatest, uh, and you really have to know what you're doing because you have to manually be able to turn channels. So if somebody's needing to get in there, um, it's one of the older ones that you've got to, uh, you've got to know exactly what buttons to push and, and how to get where you're going on it. So, you know, we could replace the radios and all. City crew is short on, uh, on vehicles. We had gotten that shippy pickup from the city. Uh, I don't know when. I tried to find paperwork on the Dodge, both the pickup and charger. Believe me, I scoured every square inch of that office going through things. That's how I discovered a lot of other things that we were lacking on, but, um, you know, there's no, if we turn that in, I'm gonna bet you that we don't get more than seven hundred and fifty dollars. Maybe on a good day with the wind blowing, we get a thousand out of it, maybe. So there's really no point in doing a trade-in on it, yet I think it would benefit the, uh, the city crew if that one was to go for the, uh, for the mowing or whatever, be able to put their stuff in there and, and, uh, and do the mower and that way we're not tying up another flatbed for city crew guys that are out working on things. Because they have that. Key points, I guess, on the second page, I'll kinda go over. Here's why we're at where we're at. First thing is we should never be in this position again. We're looking at turning in seventy-four thousand, or I say turning in, not using seventy-four thousand dollars of our budget that we were allotted for, for two thousand nineteen due to officer shortage. That's also money that we haven't spent in the line items because we haven't used the fuel, uh, because we haven't been full staffed, uh, things like that. So there's a lot of those line items that when we're a fully operating department like we should be, you're going to, uh, you're gonna spend that money and we just haven't. Salary wise alone, I'm looking at, I think, like sixty-three thousand dollars out of the salary line item that wasn't used because we've been without chief, we've been without patrolling, different things like that. So, uh, you know, vehicle tires, looking at, I've, I've checked both vehicles out that we have now, uh, neither one of them need tires. So there's a thousand dollars, I think, or something in the budget. Uh, I think it's a thousand, fifteen hundred in the budget for tires we're not gonna use this year. I know that money is, is coming out of a general fund, but I guess what I'm trying to do is, is I think I have, I have shown, well, like I said, putting this in there, um, I think I've shown in the budget that I, that, uh, that things are gonna be responsible. Vehicle care is a big thing. That was, that was on the old units down there at the bottom, uh, two thousand thirteen truck and fourteen charger. Maintenance of previous treatment and care of units. Thing is, is there was no maintenance plan for them. And that shows that when the truck was five quarts low on oil and ticking, um, really bad, that things just weren't taken care of. The vehicles weren't clean, nothing like that. So we're looking, uh, at a, what, seven-year-old, basically they're about seven years old on those vehicles. The truck, eighty-eight thousand miles. It's not mileage doubt. Eighty-eight thousand miles is not a lot of miles. Sixty-one thousand miles on the, on the charger. It's not miled out. Problem is, the charger has already had two front-end replacements. Dodge, the truck, we have it in and out of the shop. You know, just little things and they're starting to creep up. What I look at is, is I know you guys look at the, the infrastructure of the, the city. I'm looking at the infrastructure of my department. That's what I'm in charge of. That's what I've gotta look at and that's what I have to take care of. I'm looking at our, what we need, what, what's going to benefit us in the community, uh, and what's gonna help us out. As far as the vehicles, if those vehicles are clean, if you have a good maintenance program, you have somebody in charge that takes care of them and makes sure that those vehicles are cleaned, maintained, taken care of and not just run ragged, those vehicles are gonna last a whole lot longer than what we have even now. Eighty-eight thousand, you can look at, at Tom Fisher's pickup. His is due, his is a sixteen, it's due to be traded off next year, I believe, and he has like seventy-five thousand miles on it. And the truck looks great. Truck's always clean, the truck's well maintained, the inside's nice, it runs good. They had one problem that it was in the shop, um, for a couple of weeks. Getting finally some major stuff done to it that it needed, but overall it's been a good truck and it's still going strong. You look at our truck and you look at our car, who have roughly about the same amount of miles and they're ragged. Myself, I've come to work, city crew has had to show up to the house to jumpstart the, uh, the charger before because it wouldn't start and my charger wouldn't get it going. We've had to do that numerous times. I've gotten calls, uh, about the pickup not starting. Can we come over and get it jumpstarted with the charger or get a city crew or a, a jump pack? I know it's the county and the county spends the money, but you know, we've got a nice ambulance and we take care of it. Why? Cause it's an emergency vehicle that needs to be ready to go when it's called and, and it goes. Same with fire department. I mean, the fire department looks at their stuff. They're trying to fix what they need to get fixed, but they're getting new stuff because when they get the call, they've gotta be able to rely on it. It's gotta go. And we're no different. For the most part, the only difference is, is we drive our vehicle every single day. Every day it's on a street patrol. So it's not just when it gets called and it's able to keep the low mileage. I'm just afraid right now that the way those vehicles were treated, um, and the maintenance issues that were starting to come up, headlights went out on the Dodge pickup. We've had to replace the wiring, uh, a week ago, I think it was. That was in. Just stuff that's coming and, and, and it's gonna keep coming and, and getting apart. I know driving that Dodge car, um, the, the front ends, you can tell. And that's what's, that's why highway patrol's going away from Dodge, uh, chargers and, and I wanna get away from them too. My long-term planned goal is this. To try to get this vehicle and change out that shippy. Second would be next year during my, um, emergency equipment fund, I will have enough money in there to get rid of the Dodge, uh, pickup. My, how I have my plan, you know, if, if I can, if I can have my plan is those two patrol vehicles go to the patrolman, two trucks. I would keep the Dodge one because I have administrative stuff to do, so I don't put as many miles on as they do out patrolling. But I still patrol. I still put over a hundred miles a shift on the car for the most part every day. And I can limp that one along until it's time to, uh, to get that one replaced. I'd rather take care of my, my guys. The other thing is, 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 uh, changing the image, you know, um, of being a whole lot prouder of what our department is for the city. You know, that's why we've made the changes up in the office. Things are a lot different. We, you know, we're gonna take care of equipment. Um, I think I've shown, even in the short time that I'm here, that the equipment has changed. The cars are clean. They're cleaned out. We, we have a maintenance schedule with city crew now, um, and we get them in and it's all tracked. And that's the big thing is, is keeping up on those and taking care of them. My other point is, is, uh, what, what the community gains by this and us having three units. I know that's the thing is, is each person having, you know, a unit and then the part timers borrowing those. If you have Alan, Tori and Bob as your three full timers and I'm on duty during the daytime and it doesn't always guarantee, you can't, you can't always guarantee on, on another department. It's just, they have their own things to do too. It's just like them relying on us. Uh, just, you have your stuff, but Bob works, uh, four to midnight and, uh, the truck's at his house, but it's eleven o'clock in the morning and Bob and his wife are in great bend grocery shopping. Something comes up and, and I need somebody there. Nice thing will be is to call Tori. Tori has a unit and is able to come over and assist or do whatever we need if something was to happen in town. Because per the new policy for the PD, you're not allowed to drive your personal vehicle to in response to a police call. And the reason that being is because if they get into an accident on the way, their insurance will deny ever fixing their vehicle. That's the big thing. Two of having the, the reliable vehicles is like now Tori. I believe probably Tori's the only one up at the academy who's driving her own personal car up there because we can't afford for the, the pickup to go or the charger to go because when one of those goes down, we have nothing else to patrol in. Mileage wise on the vehicles for having three separate vehicles, you keep the mileage off. If I, uh, if you have two vehicles, say you average a hundred miles a day, that's, uh, that's five hundred to seven hundred miles per vehicle per week. If one goes, if one of ours goes down and then we have to use once and now it's running two shifts a day, that's two hundred miles a day. That's fourteen hundred miles a week. If, if that was to happen and with the way the equipment is now, the, uh, the truck breaks down, we're gonna be, you know, if we had to do it for a month, we're gonna have to change the oil in a month because we're gonna be over our three thousand miles of, of driving around town. And like I said, it's for better care and better, uh, and, and they'll last a whole lot longer. Now, I know that I talked about and I, and I want to be able to space equipment out so that we can get things on a rotation. And I want that too. And sometimes you're, you're dealt with a hand that you can't control on spacing that time out, but with new vehicles and taken care of, you can go a whole lot longer on the vehicles, which means you can get rid of one before and actually get some trade-in for it and then get on to, uh, to a set schedule. I just kinda like you guys were talking about other stuff and I'm, and I listen in, you know, um, keep throwing more money and more money. And we, we just, we're gonna keep putting that in there and we're never gonna get it out there. That Dodge truck when it comes to time, um, you know, we'll get a couple thousand dollars for it on trade-in. But it's not gonna be, not gonna be great. I've worked in departments where there was a single, you know, where shared units were there and I've worked for departments where everybody had their own unit. And that is what all administrators are looking at and trying to go to is everybody having a unit because. because you have less miles. It gives a car a break. If you have an officer, if you're working five days a week and you give each officer two days off, there's a, there's two days, at least one day, but possibly two depending on part-timers of giving that vehicle a break and letting it sit. And not just non-stop racking the miles. You know, like I said, they're not high-mileaged. You know, they're, they're right on par with where the miles are at. That's, that's not the problem. The problem is, is that eighty-eight thousand miles on that Dodge pickup was a rough eighty-eight thousand miles on it. And we're just having all kinds of electrical problems. I mean, we've had sirens going out. We've had light bars quit working. The headlights have quit working. Just different things. And like I said, this is the, I wouldn't even have approached, but I, I watched my budget closely. Every month when I get my new budget, I sit down with a notebook and I line every item with a highlighter of different color of where I'm at in each line item to know where I stand. And that's when I started looking at this and saying, okay, this is an opportunity, the one opportunity that we have to get ahead of the game and then be able to set our plan from there on. Because we won't be in this position again. Trust me. I'm, I'm tired, you know. It's seven-thirty in the morning until midnight every day almost and, and no breaks. I, I want to get someone hired too, but I want to get the right person. But we're just not going to be in this position financially at the end of the year like what we are with this budget. So, you know, and, and I had talked earlier with, with Citizen, you know, unlike Jeff and the city crew and stuff like that, you know, Jeff's got to worry, well, what happens when the, you know, they have their budget, but what happens when the sewer blows out underneath the school or something like that? My only worry that I really have to worry about for the next year is, is my vehicles. That's, that's all I really have to worry about. I don't have to worry about sewer system going out or a plant motor going out that's not in the budget or anything like that. Mine is strictly the vehicles is my biggest asset in the department, equipment-wise. The other thing is tool, you know, it's, it's tough. It's tough to get, to get an officer in to move here. I mean, housing's tough to find if they're married and they're going to move from somewhere, you know, a ways away, they're going to come back. Who's to say that other, the spouse is going to be able to find a job, you know, or are they going to be willing? And that, that's what we ran into with Octavia. You know, his wife just flat out didn't want to move and there was really nothing pay-wise, what he was getting paid and all that. There was really no incentive for him to, to fight the battle at home to get moved here. Equipment is a, is a big thing. You know, we were joking about it earlier up there at the academy. People noticed and said, you know, you know, hey, where'd you guys get those dark gray pants? Those look good. And Officer Press would be like, well, come to work for St. John, you'll get some dark gray pants. And they're like, hey, well, you got a new vest. Well, yeah, come to work for St. John and you get a new vest. They looked at Greg McAllister's vehicle, which is a very nice sheriff's department vehicle up there. And, you know, we're not able to say that same thing. We just, you know, it made a huge difference just to put graphics on the car and they look good. But that does nothing for the functionality of them. Yeah, it looks good and it shows a little bit of pride, but not functionality, not reliability, and that's the big thing that we're going to look at, so. That's why I put all this together, kind of did the numbers. The one page in there I'm not a big fan of because one, we didn't budget for having a truck payment. But talking with Jamie, I wanted to bring everything I could and, and do all the legwork that I could do to come to the table. And that's what the, that's what the bank came up with on, on loan payments for both the truck and then half of the truck cost of financing. You know, he gave me those two options and just put it on paper or whatever it costs. But like I said, when I built my budget, I didn't build it with the truck payment included for two thousand twenty. So, I'm just, I'm not a big fan of that. I mean, I can make things work and I can, I can do stuff. I mean, I definitely look out for the stuff, but I just kind of think that this opportunity of having seventy-four thousand dollars that we didn't use, I mean, we're still going to, even if we bought this truck and we paid for everything, that's still coming to forty thousand dollars that we didn't use, roughly.
That's why I'm just wondering, why, why do you think we need to finance on that?
No, 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 and I, I don't.
Just an option?
Yeah, it was just something I wanted to make sure that, and Jamie, you know, me and her sat down and talked. It was just something that, you know, what if the council says this? And I just wanted to try and cover everything that I could possibly think of. I don't like that option and I, and I wouldn't even consider it really. I just, I wanted to make sure that I brought everything to you that I could bring.
But the seventy-four thousand is the overall budget and we have, don't you have in your equipment reserve? What's in there?
We do have the equipment reserve. Equipment reserve, I have thirty, I think it's thirty-one thousand? Yeah, thirty-one thousand, which would be for replacing a vehicle next year. Because we're putting, I think you guys are putting fifteen thousand a year into that. Now, the thing is, is if we, we complete that and we buy this truck, we sell this truck and, and we get that or, you know, we change off the Dodge pickup or the charger, it's going to take about four years, well, three years. We do three more years. But I'm just worried that, that one of those other vehicles isn't going to make it for the, the next three years and then we're, we're put, we're pulling out of that fund to do repairs instead of getting something new. We're going to spend the money to fix something that we're going to get rid of in, in twelve to twenty-four months as per spending that money on something that we're going to have for seven, eight years. That's, that's my only thing. And, you know, and that, and it's just, you know, I understand you guys have to make decisions. I just have to do the best that I can do for my department, what I see and, and what I think that we need.
Adam?
Yes, Sam?
If you put on the one and a half people that you're talking about hiring, if you can give them, you've used up over half of that. You probably used up sixty thousand of that seventy-four out of your budget.
Yes.
We've been down the road before on these new vehicles and I'm still adam, this is nothing personal.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm adamantly opposed to it. My daughter went to school with a four-hundred vehicle, sixteen-years-old, with four hundred thousand on it. The one I drive every day, she's got two fifty. The other one's got a hundred seventy-five. My wife goes to work every day to a healthcare job with one a hundred seventy-five thousand on it. I go in the absolute worst weather every day that I have to, so does Ross. And that's when we really have to go and neither one of us drives a new vehicle.
And the only difference I can see, Jim, is you take care of your stuff, whereas the vehicles have not been taken care of like they should have.
And unfortunately, that's the position that I'm put in. And that's the only reason I'm bringing it too, is because I'm, I'm caught in a bad position the way the vehicles were treated. The other thing is, me, being the only one on, when I do go home, I'm, I'm up and fully dressed and had a call in six minutes. And my, my average time to any call in the city is six minutes from home. Thing is, is if it's a medical emergency and I'm waiting on an ambulance or, or it's a, it's a crime, me trying to then run an extension cord out my, out my garage and get the charger on and get it started, you know, that's not something that I want to explain to a family or to a victim that it took me a while because I had to get the car started. And that's my only thing is, they're just, they're breaking down. And, and it wasn't, it wasn't anything for our department. And I guess I'm trying to get that, that problem fixed. And this is, this is one solution that I have found for this year. Just because I, you know, it's, it's totally different. You know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be making the changes that I'm making if I had any intentions of going anywhere else or not staying here. The thing is, that's, that's my whole goal, but I want to build our department. You know, everybody's got to look at their department. Unfortunately, we've been short, so our budget is, is a lot shorter. That we've spent this year is a lot less than what we will spend for next year's budget. That's my only thing. That's the only reason I bring it to council. Otherwise, I would have never brought this up. But a light bulb went off and I thought, okay, this is a way for me to get out of a hole in our department this one time, because we won't have this opportunity budget-wise again.
I guess one of the issues I have is like how often we replace them. The issues we have now is that those vehicles were purchased too close together, I feel like. And what you're, what you're saying basically, these would get in your two vehicles, I think the miles would go up around the same time or we will run into the same issue in eight years or something?
I don't, I don't believe we will. And I'll, and I'll have to say, I don't believe that. And the reason I don't believe that is because now there isn't a maintenance schedule. It is tracked. The vehicles are taken care of. You know, that's the one thing from day one that I, I came here was how these vehicles were. Nothing was taken care of. None of the equipment, nothing up in the office. You guys have come up here and seen between the evidence room and all that, absolutely nothing in this department for a while has ever been taken care of. And I think I've shown that now equipment's going to be taken care of and we're a lot more accountable. It's just like, you know, speaking with a couple of you guys on, to the side. You know, we went and bought Tori's gun belt equipment when she got hired. We're still going, we were still going through stuff in the office and just found an entire box that had twenty, twenty-five holsters and half of them were still brand-new and in the, in the packages. There was just money wasted and nothing was taken care of. But now everything, we have an entire book up there that everything is, everything is accounted for. It's locked down to every single bullet up there and that, and including what the officers have on them. Everything is accounted for. But that's not what's been going on for a while. And I know you guys didn't know about and that was part of the problem was there was no communication, nothing was getting done. And nothing was, was respected or taken care of. And, and that's a lot different. You know, from uniforms to cars to the office, everything is, is completely different up there. So, that's the only reason I say we're, even eighty-eight thousand miles is not milled out. There's nothing wrong with the mileage. I'm not complaining about that. Coming to you guys saying, well, it's got eighty-eight thousand miles. We need to get rid of it. It's those eighty-eight thousand miles that are on it. That was what the problem is. It's not high. You know, sheriff's department's on a schedule to replace every single vehicle every four years. So, they get a new vehicle every year and then one year, two vehicles go. We're not on that same rotation, but what I was saying was, we get out of this hole now, we can keep one a whole lot longer. I mean, we can keep one for ten years. If you take care of it, it's going to be fine. And that means that we can get rid of one in seven or eight. And then we start getting on the cycle. And that, and that's what I was meaning was, this gets us out of the hole. But then if we turn one in at seven, eight years, we're going to get a little bit more money out of it on trade-in. And now we're, we're actually on a schedule. And that's what I'm trying to do is set myself up for down the road, not short-term fixes.
Sheriff's department covers something like eight hundred square miles. City police department covers one square mile.
You're doing a good job with your budget and I, I can tell just by looking at the vehicles.
Well, everything looks better. I mean, I'm not complaining about the way things are taken care of. I just, I just.
I'm not in love with the idea of getting two in two years or two in six months. I mean, it's not even two in two years. It'd be two in a year with the, I'm not in love with that idea. I just, I agree with Esaie. They will be too close in age as far as trying to get on a rotation. I think that's the problem.
But I, I don't disagree wanting to get a new one and I think you do deserve to be rewarded.
Well, and I'm not asking to be.
No, I, no, but that is the way I view it.
My only thing.
You, you do, the department deserves another one. I mean, to have more than two. And if we do get the officer tired, whether we wait till next year when it's in the budget or now, I don't.
Good, because what, where I was thinking was, and, and I see what you're saying. And, and that's what I was trying to explain to him was, was, you know, it's nothing for, because he's right. You're, you're not putting as many miles on sheriff's department. I'm not trying to compare our mileage to theirs. But if, if we order in, say, July, the end of July next year for, out of the emergency equipment fund, that we'll have the money in there for it, we won't get it until the very end of the year.
Right.
So, we're going to have a little bit of a break, but what I was looking at and that's what I was explaining to Esaie was, was just because it's not mileage out, doesn't mean, and we'll get more money out of it, doesn't mean that in seven years we get rid of that one. But then we can keep the other one. Then we have a four-year gap. You know, or, or, you know, six years we get rid of it or seven, you know, and we keep it for ten or eleven on the next one. We take care of it. Then we have a three to four-year gap that we're putting that money into the emergency equipment and now we're on rotation. The only reason I'm bringing this to you guys tonight is simply because this is the one opportunity that we've been shorthanded that we could actually, you know, get something out of coming under budget because, you know, we, I plan to be full staff. We're, you know, right now especially, I figured it out because I figured out the next seven paychecks for, for Officer Press. Mine, I don't get any overtime. She's there at the academy until December twentieth. So, basically, she's done for the year here. I don't get any on-call time. I don't get any overtime, all of that, so, you know, what I, what my paycheck is, what my paycheck is. So, that's how I figured out where we're at to the end of the year of what we're going to, what we're going to spend.
Well, we're never.
And our waste is out.
We're never going to mileage them out. These, we're, we're putting, we're putting a thousand miles a month. I mean, these, you can, they're within a hundred miles of each other average. It's a thousand miles a month is what these two vehicles both have on them, average. I mean, we're never going to mileage anything out of them.
No, no, we won't. And, and that is.
Our amount.
Our, our goal is not to, you know, and that's why I'm saying, and, and that's why I said, it's not the eighty-eight thousand miles is the problem. It's just those eighty-eight thousand miles, a majority of them.
They were taken care of.
All, yeah. And that's what I'm just trying to save the city money. You know, for one, that's my infrastructure is the vehicles. That's my biggest thing in there. And it's just the reliability and having to go and take them to the shop all the time. You know, I've had, I've had David, hey, over there, hey, look at the headlights. Well, can't figure it out. Okay, well, now let's take it to Fisher. Well, that was his time of trying to figure out why they don't work. Down-vine bulbs is still not working. Then we end up out of Fishers, you know. Well, then we're having to rewire the front headlights and stuff because the wires have all melted and everything like that. You know, it's just, we're having, those issues are coming up. The charger is, you know, I drive around at night with the window down. You're not sneaking up on anybody. That thing is just a clunk bucket as it's going around town. That's just the way it is. We have too many dips. The one thing, my goal for the whole department is to not have any cars. We don't need cars. You know, one, we pick up dogs. That's why we have a dog box in the back because I was tired of the truck getting tore up of hauling dogs in there. Fleas inside of it, mud inside of it, everything. We, you know, that's why we bought one. And, and it's installed in the truck as for animal pickup. Because I'm just, I'm not going to allow our vehicles to be in a position that they're in, that they were in when I got here. The what they've come to, starting May nineteenth, I didn't have any control over. I do have control from May twentieth on and that's what I'm just trying to fix right now.
I guess I'm a little bit hung up on not getting rid of one of our patrol vehicles. And I just wonder if we could get rid of the car because it seems to be close to problems. Keep your O2 Chevy or whatever that is, maybe put it a little bit different radio then, you know, just, just to get it back and forth to your houses, you know, in case of emergency.
You can't.
I just think that charger just hanging around is.
No, I agree. The, the charger is, is by far. And the only reason I looked at my plan was because I looked at mileage. And it was a lower mile than what the pickup was. And I know the pickup was really run hard and that's why I was looking at getting rid of that one next. What was just for that reason only. Trust me, I would love to get rid of the charger first. But I just looked, tried to look responsibly of not, not what I wanted, but what was best for the department. And that was lower miles. And I know that it was driven just a little bit nicer than what the truck was, you know, with the, the engine problems and, you know. When you're following up a boss who's doing everything they can to try and get a new vehicle by tearing up what they have and it doesn't work, then the new boss comes in and he gets those vehicles and you've got to try to make do with it. And that's what I'm just trying to get us out of the hole with by this option of this now and then one out of the emergency equipment fund and, and do that. Because otherwise, if, and I didn't, if I didn't think the three vehicles were important, I think for recruiting process of getting somebody to come to town saying, okay, hey, you get a new vehicle, you know, but it also helps in response time, that I would, I would have pitched, okay, well, let's get rid of the Dodge and let's get, or both Dodges, the car and the pickup. Let me get one pickup now. Let me get one out of the emergency equipment fund. But I really think that I'm willing to drive the older vehicle myself and keep the miles off of it because administrative stuff. Because I feel it's that important that we each, you know, we have three vehicles that are able to respond because somebody's going to be out of town. And you're not going to have the equipment in that one. But, you know, it'd be a really waste of money to, to. But, you know, it'd be a really waste of money to, to try and upgrade all that equipment in there for it just to sit. And I think we're going to get more use, more of a break on vehicles, less miles on the vehicles by having three instead of two, you know? And that's why I'm saying, that's why I'm projecting that we can look at nine, ten years of the vehicle because it's not going to be used as much and therefore our money spent is going to cover us a whole lot longer than having two vehicles, three officers, two shifts, seven days a week. You're just, you're constantly running the ones. So that's, that's how I looked at it was from breaking it down on mileage over the years.
You've already.
I agree with you with one thing is that pickups are better to keep than the Dodge. I would run, I'd run all of them till the wheels come off of them.
I think we're about.
And then they go to the crusher, then they go. Even if you, even if you get a new vehicle, I would make some use of it instead of driving it again.
I meant to stop by and take a ride into sometime just to figure it out.
Um.
Come out of shit.
You've already got that budget in the emergency fund for next year. I mean, your budget's already in.
So what we have for motor vehicle repairs, I mean, we have, we have twenty-eight hundred. So if we run them till the wheels fall off and those are mop cars for one, so fixing them is expensive.
Just get rid of them.
Um, you know, that twenty-eight hundred dollars isn't going to last because that's the same thing we're budgeted for next year. I think actually I increased it because I knew we were going to have problems. So I think actually I'm up to thirty-five hundred, but it isn't going to take anything for that thirty-five hundred. There's no warranties, there's no nothing on them. Thirty-five hundred is going to go pretty quick when we start having the major issues. Front end alone is going to cost us, I think it's thirteen hundred dollars and I, that charger's due for, it's going to be due for another front end. These, the city dips just don't, you know, but the.
Play, play city crew. Play district.
So, but that's just my pitch. You know, that's, that's my thinking and how I'm trying to, to run the department, fix the department and get us the best equipment that we can have so that we're reliable, both for the officers and to the city, of response calls to get the people and, and having the equipment when you get there that you need. That's the big thing. You know, if, if you get somewhere, you know, you don't have the equipment, it doesn't matter that you're there. You're not going to do a whole lot if you, if you can't help. So that's just kind of where I'm at with it. That's the legwork in my thought process of trying to build my, my long-term and my short-term plan all in the same one. I just don't have other things that I have to worry about as much as city crew. Vehicles is my big thing.
Is this, is it Rusty Ford that has the, the state bid?
Yes.
Yeah. And that's why you went there?
Well, yeah, yeah. And with our fleet number, they were the cheapest ones. They, they beat Marby's out and out of, out of Great Bend, about five Bend when I got there. So this was the cheapest way to go when I called them up, got the bid that same day on, so. You guys have anything else, any questions on?
I'm sure we can all agree this, this presentation of these vehicles.
Well.
Even Jim has to agree with that.
I hate to admit that, but it was best sales pitch ever.
But you know.
First time I need equipment, I'm calling you.
That's just, that's where I'm at.
Yeah, that's what you need to generate.
I've got to take care of my department and that's, that's my job, so.
I'm not opposed to one new vehicle, but I just, I have mixed emotions about getting two in twelve months. I mean, that's the way I look at it is it's two in twelve months. I got mixed emotions about that. For the, for the next, to start the rotation, I, I, I got, I have mixed.
And, and, but the only thing is, is we will never, you know, we, for me to come to the council then and say, okay, you know, in a couple of years, say, out of the blue, can I have thirty-four thousand dollars? It's going to be tougher and that's why I just look at this only opportunity that I have, this one time and out of the budget, to be able to fix ourselves and, and move on. Because, you know, otherwise then I'm going to come in here and, you know, everybody else is, is asking for their stuff and I'm budgeted for this and that's the only reason I'm asking is because we won't be in this position again of short-staffed. You know, once Tori gets back, she's going to be required to go to forty hours a year continued education and maintain her certification. You know, I'm going to have to do mine. We hire a new officer, he's going to have to go to the academy. You know, if we get a new one that doesn't have it, if we do, then we're going to have to go for the forty hours a year continued education on that, which means we're going to be spending more out of our budget on fuel, tires, oil changes, you know, vehicle maintenance and wear and tear on them. And that's why this is just, this was just a golden opportunity that came to me last week of this is my only, only option and my only window to be able to do this, this way. I mean, trust me, I don't, I don't like buying back-to-back, but that's why taking care of them. We can get rid of one in seven years and keep the other one for ten. You know, whichever one is higher mileage to done, then that's the one we get rid of, but then we're on a rotation path and that's what I'm after. You know, I don't, I don't want to be in that position either, but I have a plan to get out of that by doing it this way and we're still going to be okay. Because normally you would trade it out eight years, you know, most people do, or ten years, you know? We can get rid of one a little early, it's not going to hurt us and we'll actually get a little bit more and then we're on rotation. But we won't have an opportunity like this again.
I just want to remind everyone, just because it's budgeted, doesn't mean the cash is there and that's why I had to get the payments.
Yeah.
Just because the budget's showing that we have seventy-fourth extra thousand doesn't mean that the dollars are actually there.
Right now.
Right now.
Right.
Yes. The budgeted is just what we are allowed to spend.
Is that thirty-four thousand dollars actually there?
I'm sure there's thirty-four thousand dollars. We're, we're building our cash reserve back up. So yes, but it's, if you guys want to spend that much, I will.
Borrowing money.
And my only problem with borrowing is, is to just, you know, and, and I'm very, like I said, I watch my budget every, every month and every time I get something, I go through. My only problem is I didn't budget for a truck payment. That's my only thing. If I would have just come because I wanted to ask you guys and this opportunity wasn't here, which I wouldn't have done, then I would have proposed that in my twenty-twenty budget of, you know, well, I want six hundred dollars, you know, in case we could buy a vehicle a month times twelve, but that wasn't the case. You know, that, I, I wasn't planning on ever coming to you about this, but this is the only opportunity I had right here out of this, how this was working out for October one for three more months.
I think you could a lot of work in there.
So.
Don't, I don't.
You're not going to.
I am not. No, I, I'm not going there. I, I see too many other things the city is facing besides having more than three, we've got three cars. I, I just, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't go there.
I guess, I mean, it, it makes sense to do this year. I might have to agree with Ross. I don't like buying back-to-back year after year, but, you know, at some point in time, I deal with it right now with the fire department for the county. Because of lack of planning, we spend a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar a long year. That'll never happen again at one time because we now have a ten-year goal for the fire department. Everything's spread out throughout the next ten years and needs to be replaced. And at some point in time, you just have to jump in and buy the bullet and buy a truck or buy gear or whatever you have to do to get out of that rotation. And I think my only suggestion, if you were to purchase another vehicle next year, I'd take that Dodge Charger and I would get rid of it. There's no sense for deterring constantly.
Put it on eBay and sell it.
You know, if you don't get one, I say you drive them till the wheels fall off of the old two.
My only problem is, is I, I just not, you know.
If you have a new vehicle.
Right, right.
If you have a new one and you have the money in reserve to buy one, if something major goes wrong with that charger next year, buy a new one then. But I wouldn't.
Take it to the crusher.
I would get rid of the charger before you get rid of the pickup. Even though the pickup might have more miles, I think it is more beneficial than.
Pickup, you can hand down to other departments, your pickup's easier to merchandise.
And you will probably get a better resale out of the pickup.
Exactly.
Even if it has more miles, it's four-wheel drive and it's a pickup, not a car. I, I think it makes sense to buy a vehicle right now with, with what he's projected to save. I do.
What about next year, getting that one?
I may not be here next year, Ross. Ryan may not be here and we know Jim's not.
I'm, I'm not okay with it.
Aren't you guys lucky?
But, you know, I don't know. I guess it, there's another year. It's another year. Like I said, I'm not a hundred percent on it, but.
I don't know how many officers are going to have this next year.
Okay, so if we go with this and revisit it and, and it's not in the plan to get a new one next year or we can revisit it?
Well, I, I would say.
Is that a fair negotiation?
Now, and, yeah, no, I, I understand what you're saying and how about, how about buy what we have projected leftover, we get us taken care of, we'll have the money in there because we have thirty-one thousand. Well, we only need three thousand dollars more to get it outfitted per this price. Now, granted, it may go up, so that we'll have the money in the emergency equipment fund, which is what's there to buy our vehicles. It's not to say that we get that, we keep these, we turn that city truck in, it's a city crew, whatever, but then next year, if everything's going okay, we have that money in there and then if it starts to look like, okay, yeah, we're going to have, we need to do it now, then we just go and we buy it because I have the money in that fund. So we don't necessarily have to buy it next year, but we'll have the money that if an emergency comes and all of a sudden we're having maintenance issues and we're going down, before we tear up the new truck of mileage in it all the time and driving it all the time, then we can't. But then if it's twenty-twenty-one, okay, hey, we have the money in there and we have a little bit more because now we can get started on the rotation going in. I'm okay with that too. You know, order it, you know, January of twenty-twenty-one and then it's there by July because it takes about fifteen, seventeen weeks for it to come in, to get those, to get those vehicles. So, you know, it's not going to be, you guys prove it and then I'm going to go have it and we'll have it in, in two weeks and then we'll get it outfitted. It, it's going to be after the first of the year by the time we can get it. But then I'm willing to say, you know, let's set on the money because we'll have, we have thirty-one, we put fifteen in a year, so we'll have forty-six thousand dollars in there. We sit on it. If nothing's big and we're doing okay and everything's working, then twenty-twenty-one, okay, let's look at getting one and, and we can, then we'll start getting some gap. And I'm okay with that. I mean, that's a good plan.
You'll look better this time next year.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, just to see, I just, my problem is, is I don't have the money in the budget for if we have something major to go along with either one of those vehicles, we just don't have the money in there. I mean.
We'll support it and handle it.
We have five hundred dollars left in our, in our equipment or on our vehicle repair fund right now. And we're in October and we have five hundred bucks. So next year, you know, we might go over, depending on what happens with it.
So we guessed. Charger, let me know, charger.
I'd, I'd just, I'd buy a vehicle and have three of them and reevaluate next year. Get rid of them.
The old pickup?
Give it to Jeff or give it to city crew.
Well, you know, we're all, you know, like I said, we're all.
There's no reason to trade them in.
No reason.
You're not going to get anything out of the two vehicles.
I said, there's no reason to trade any of them in ever. You're literally getting nothing.
Not, not right now.
They're not there literally by town.
There's no reason to trade anything in.
Yeah. I'm not opposed to it, but I will tell you, look, I, I was not happy with the previous council that bought this pickup that close apart and I just, that's just stuck to me and I'm not going to do that. And when somebody, was it you that said, or somebody said about the wheels falling off of it? I mean, I wouldn't go to that far, but I'd say at least two years to keep, keep the charger and do it next. But I'm just speaking upfront, that's my opinion, like, I don't see me myself doing it next year, but I am okay with this, this year. Off, based off the information I have with this meeting.
I mean, no, I, I mean, I want to get a distance in there, I agree.
I make a motion to allow Allen to spend thirty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars to buy a twenty-twenty-four F-150 and the cost to outfit the unit with lights, radios included. Two thou, twenty-eight thousand, seventy-three dollars for the truck and six thousand, seventy-five dollars to outfit it.
I have a motion on the table. You have a second.
What are we dealing, financing our cash? You know what to count, right?
Sure.
Is this money here, have you looked ahead?
Our, our cash, it usually sits at like ninety-two-hundred thousand or so, yeah. To tell you off the top of my head, I can't because.
That's more than thirty-four.
I tried to open up the system and it keeps moving me out, so. Because I knew that was going to come up, but it's crazy, so.
Okay, I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second? Motion in a second.
A second? Let his second.
I was going to go up to second.
I didn't hear a second, so I don't know.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
You sure?
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. We have a ten-minute executive session. I'm saying to non-elected personnel matters, so. Ross, you called this one, who do you want to do this?
Everybody at the table.
Everyone at the table. Okay.
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes. Sixteen after nine. Okay.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. A motion in a second, all in favor? Okay, motion carries. We resume at nine sixteen. Call councilmate back to order. I have a motion on the table.
I make a motion, go back into executive session for ten minutes, same vehicle, same issue.
Second. You have a motion in a second on the table, all in favor? Motion carries. We will resume at nine twenty-six.
You want to share that with, with you?
Oh, yeah.
Boss being back to order. Okay, moving on to next executive session, ten-minute executive session, transfer non-elected personnel matters to discuss second annual evaluation.
I probably only need five now because I only have one.
Five minutes. Two.
Do two.
Ten minutes.
Okay.
To include everybody at the table.